Okay, good afternoon. I am going to call the Audit Committee meeting back to order as of twelve forty-six. Is there any additional business that needs to be discussed?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move that we adjourn the Audit Committee meeting.
Second.
Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Smith Knight.
Yes.
Oh, actually.
Approved.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you do the, was, you got a first and a second?
Oh, um, yes, I got a first and a second.
Okay, then you can just do a voice vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the meeting is adjourned. Motion carries.
All right, well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. The November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Tennessee State Board of Trustees is now called to order. The time is now twelve forty-seven P. M. And at this time, we will need to do a roll call. So Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Winton.
Here.
Trustee Truber.
Here.
Trustee Tucker.
Present.
Trustee Chapman.
Present.
Trustee Smith Knight. Trustee Smith.
Present.
Trustee Qualls.
Present.
Trustee Northfleet.
Present.
Trustee Vasquez.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay, then.
And, and, I'm sorry, and the most trusted trustee, trustee Young Seeler.
Wow.
Crazy.
Okay, the proposed agenda for today's meeting is contained in your board materials for the November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four meeting. And I move that we approve the agenda. However, I would like to make an amendment to that agenda and add an, add one item to discuss um, that came out of the Audit Committee meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Well, all, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll. So what do we just need to, no, we just need, we're good with the voice vote.
Yeah, you just do it.
Perfect, thank you.
You, you just, someone seconded the motion?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, then it's just both vote, you're fine.
Perfect. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of several board meeting minutes and committee meaning, committee meeting minutes as referenced and contained in the November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four board materials. Those are found in tabs four A through K. I move to approve the meetings as contained in the board materials for November twenty-second. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, the question is on the motion to approve the board and committee meeting minutes as contained in the board materials for the November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, next item up for, on the agenda is the Chair's remarks. I'm gonna try to keep these short. I actually wrote them down for a change, which is not my usual uh, thing that I do. But first and foremost, I want to extend a warm welcome to all of you joining today. Your dedication to preserving TSU's legacy and shaping its future is deeply appreciated. And, I'm gonna go off script just a little bit. To all of y'all who's been in the audience and have been sitting with us for hours on end, I want to thank you all so much because it shows just how much you are dedicated to this university and all of your time. And then I also wanted to just make a note to all the lawmakers, policymakers, and staff that have been helping us in every way, shape, form, or fashion um, to, that are behind the scenes and are not thanked enough, so thank you all for your help. Now, let me go back to my, my written notes before I get myself in trouble. Okay, so we've gone through a lot of transition together, and there likely be a lot more transition that we'll go through. But know that there continues to be work to ensure that the students of Tennessee State University have the opportunity to receive the best education possible. I'd also like to take this time to express my gratitude to my fellow board members for your months of hard work and your genuine care for our beloved university. We are a committed group of alumni united by a shared purpose. The value of our education shines through in each and every one of you, and I am profoundly grateful for your partnership. So before we commit, proceed with the committee reports, I want to outline our expectations for the remainder of two thousand twenty-four and set the stage for our progress in two thousand twenty-five. Our focus must remain on serving our students, faculty, and community with excellence and accountability. This includes our fiduciary responsibilities, enhancing transparency, and addressing all matters affecting the university. Recently, the State Building Commission raised concerns stemming from several audits, issues related to enrollment, further layoffs, consulting contracts, and these challenges have a direct impact under the, on the assets under our care. And that means our faculty and students and our facilities, including the Avon Williams Campus. To be clear, all facilities must be evaluated before any action will be taken by this board. As a board, we are obligated to exercise due diligence and reasonable care so that no decision is at the discretion of one party or is made in haste. To date, I believe that this board, North State leaders, have received enough information necessary to make the informed and critical decisions as we proceed into two thousand twenty-five. To address this, I am requesting a comprehensive memo from interim President Johnson, which you'll go into a little bit of this in, in a few moments by Friday, December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. And that detailed memo addresses, will be addressed to the Board of Trustees and the State Building Commission. And this document should summarize the accomplishments under the Hundred Day Action Plan and provide data-backed recommendations regarding enrollment and programming adjustments. Any potential adjustments to academic programming are taken very seriously by this board, and we will undergo an evaluation to determine whether, if any, financial exigency is the appropriate course of action. In addition, by Monday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, by end of day, I would like for the interim president's team to compile and submit all documents, payments, and consulting deliverables associated with the immediate past president's work since June thirty, two thousand twenty-four. Please note that this board has not approved any agreements with the immediate past president, and we will address all future agreements of those today. For full transparency on these matters, it's essential for restoring trust, starting with the preservation and disclosure of all related documents by the stated deadline, even though the Tennessee Senate has already uh, disclosed some of that on our behalf. So anyway, as a volunteer board, emphasis on the volunteer. We are entrusted with life-changing decisions for TSU students and faculty. We must operate with the highest standards of transparency and accountability. And while some of yesterday and today's reports have been difficult to hear, I am confident that progress is being made and will continue to be made. We will continue to take decisive action so that we can end two thousand twenty-four on the strongest footing possible and begin two thousand twenty-five with the hope and intent that we are prepared for anything that comes before us. So thank you all for all of your discussions and all of that today. And I just wanna end my comments with a special shout-out to the December graduates. And I wanna say this to any employer that's watching this or anyone thinking about hiring somebody with the class of two thousand twenty-four. You all have been, you are a part of a tradition of leaders, innovators, and changemakers who continue to leave an indelible mark on the world. These graduates are the exact type that employees, employers should consider having on their team. They have persevered through unprecedented challenges. Two different university presen, presidencies, a global pandemic, a national bombing, multiple tornadoes, constant news press that not are always, that are usually not very positive to hear. But despite these obstacles, they have not only survived, they have thrived. They are the living embodiment of our motto, think, work, and serve. And I cannot wait to cheer you on along with the rest of our board as you cross this stage and step into the next chapter of your journey. And with that, I will turn my, turn the comments over to President Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Winton. Yesterday and this morning, the board committees met and engaged in robust and insightful discussions centered on guiding TSU and its many constituent parts in a new day for the university. These meetings are essential for the board's work as Tennessee State University's governing body. Our board was appointed as stewards of this institution just four months and eight days ago. Today, we mark over one hundred days into my tenure as interim president. I want to commend Chair Porson Winton and the Tennessee Board of, Tennessee State University Board of Trustees. Your dedication, engagement, and willingness to work diligently with us enabled us to make meaningful progress in an incredibly brief time. As we enter this next phase of our sheer journey to sustain a stable and future-ready TSU, I express my heartfelt gratitude to your leadership guidance and steadfast commitment to this university. Your work is deeply appreciated, and your continued support will remain vital as we navigate the challenges ahead. I also want to thank our faculty, staff, and administrators who come to work every day to do the university's work, preparing our students for brighter futures for all of us, and uplifting people throughout Tennessee and beyond. Your commitment and continuous improve, your commitment to continuous improvement and support of our mission is central as we engage the future. Please also accept my deepest heartfelt thank you. Now, I'd like to present a message that we've prepared for our TSU community that underscores our progress and outlines where we've been, what we've achieved, and the work still ahead. And so, we have a video that will be played now. Greetings, TSU family. I come before you today to address the many concerns raised during and after the recent hearing with the State Building Commission on November fourteenth that highlighted several of Tennessee State University's challenges. But first, I would like to make clear that Tennessee needs TSU and TSU needs the state of Tennessee. This symbiotic relationship was forged in nineteen twelve and remains true to this day and in the future that we fashion together. This powerful and unshakable bond is purpose-driven. It is an essential engine for transformation that continues to impact our students and people in rural and urban communities across Tennessee, achieving sustainable change that uplifts and empowers. TSU matters. We stand on a record of ingenuity, innovation, creativity, and caring for people from all walks of life. We are a resilient institution, undaunted by many obstacles, including long years of underfunding. We continue to rise, standing on more than one hundred years of impact. This is who we are, which contrasts sharply with efforts to define the university based solely on current challenges rather than the superior value TSU contributes to the people of Tennessee and beyond. The SBC hearing underscored critical financial enrollment challenges, which are not unique to TSU. Higher education institutions nationwide grapple with similar issues driven by rising costs and shifting enrollment trends. At TSU, these challenges have deep roots and require immediate decisive action. Since I was appointed interim president over a hundred days ago, my team and I have worked tirelessly to address these issues through our trajectory change initiative. First, we've implemented the Financial Action Plan, which is focused on aligning expenses with revenues to ensure fiscal responsibility, recovering outstanding receivables to stabilize cash flow, and improving operational efficiency through targeted cost-saving measures. We are developing our enrollment and student success plan to rebuild and stabilize our student body. This plan prioritizes targeted outreach and recruitment to bring in new talent, enhanced retention and support services to keep students engaged and thriving, and frameworks for progression and completion, ensuring students successfully graduate and achieve their goals. Additionally, we are strengthening partnerships with state leaders and peer institutions to secure necessary resources and adopt cost-saving practices. Collaboration will help us increase operational productivity while advancing TSU's mission. We have made progress in just over one hundred days, which is due in part to the great work and support from our TSU Board of Trustees, who have been on the job for less than six months. However, as the SBC hearing emphasized, much work is still ahead, and we have just begun. The challenges we now face were years in the making and will not be easily solved overnight. There are no quick fixes, but we will change the trajectory of our institution, and we will do so in a manner that strengthens our mission and commitment to our students. Parents may be wondering, why should my daughter or son of promise choose TSU in this moment of challenge? The answer is clear. TSU is more than just a university, it's a multifaceted social impact institution that shapes lives and communities. TSU is a hub of innovation, community engagement, and cultural vitality. A thriving TSU benefits our students and strengthens us in Tennessee and beyond. Over the coming days and weeks, we will continue to update you on our progress and discuss how you can help sustain TSU for future generations. In the meantime, to our students, stay with us. You are part of a legacy that has stood firm for over a century. This is your university, and it is here for you. To our parents, as we address our challenges, please trust that we are taking every step to ensure that our students, your daughters and sons, receive an education that prepares them for success. To our faculty, staff, alumni, and friends, stand with TSU. Your support is critical to overcoming our challenges and securing our future. Finally, to other stakeholders and other allies at the state capitol, across the state, and around the country, we recognize the difficult work ahead and are committed to addressing these issues to preserve our mission and ensure a sustainable, future-ready TSU. The road ahead won't be easy, but working together, we will secure TSU's legacy and fulfill its promise as a transformative institution. Let's continue this journey with strength, resilience, collaboration, and pride. Thank you. As you saw on the video, TSU's bond with the state is essential. Tennessee needs TSU, and TSU needs Tennessee. This partnership has been critical to our progress and will be the foundation of our future success. When I arrived at TSU, we faced urgent financial challenges, including liquidity issues and inherited debt. With enrollment finalized, we worked with state leaders to secure thirty-two million dollars to stabilize our finances. This achievement was made possible by the dedicated efforts of our team. Through the Financial Action Plan, part of the trajectory change initiative, we implemented cost-saving uh, measures, including a freeze on non-essential spending and strategic realignments, achieving thirteen million dollars in annualized savings. But TSU is more than finances, it's about people. On Tuesday night, I witnessed firsthand, at our annual tree lighting ceremony, the vibrant energy and pride of our students, faculty, staff, alums, along with support of board members, were, it was a powerful reminder of the hope and the community, of the, reminder of the hope and community that defines TSU. When I left campus to get a bite to eat that night, I ran into members of the fourth cohort of students in TSU's Levi Watson Junior Institute. Now, of course, I'm on tape, but I, I could tell my wife, actually, I didn't actually get a meal, I went to get ice cream, and that's when I ran all those guys in there. And anyway, uh, these young men, it was about eight of them, uh, preparing for their career in medicine and dentistry, um, they all came to me to shake my hand and to talk about TSU. Their passion and potent, and potential was inspiring. My earlier interaction with students at the tree lighting and off-campus brought joy to my heart because I want TSU to provide for our students what my wife and I have sought for our son and wish for our grandson, opportunity, success, and a brighter future. This is precisely what the unbreakable bond between Tennessee and TSU calls for now. By working in transparent and accountable collaboration, we will transform TSU, sustain its legacy, and build a future-ready institution that elevates the success of our students and uplifts the lives of the people of Tennessee and beyond. This is how we began in nineteen twelve, with an unbreakable bond, where TSU and the state of Tennessee, together, work to transform lives and ignite new possibilities for the benefit of the world. I want to thank you.
Thank you for those remarks. Next, we will hear from our committees. The first committee report is the Ad-Hoc Committee on the Presidential Search. Trustee Marquita Qualls, I'm asking you to report the items from the ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Chair Winton. Yesterday, the ad hoc committee met to receive a report on one item, an update on the presidential search process. In that meeting, we discussed the timeline, the process, and a brief statement of qualifications. The committee took no further action. This concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Qualls, for the ad hoc Presidential Search Committee report. The next item on the agenda is the Finance Committee report. The chair recognizes Finance Committee Chair, trustee Dewayne Tucker, who will report any action and informational items from the Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yesterday and this morning, we concluded, uh, the Financial Committee, uh, meetings over a couple, couple days. We were not as efficient as, efficient as some other committees. Uh, but we had a robust, uh, conversation on a lot of reports that were presented by management, of which it included an update on our budget shortfall and financing required to meet cash flow needs. We had a report on the Financial Action Plan that was provided by Dr. Burnett. Uh, we also had a report on enrollment and had a, a nice discussion around enrollment growth and strategies around, uh, enrollment going forward. And then we had a report on the development fundraising, and some good initiatives are underway, and there were some discussions about, uh, giving Tuesday and other opportunities to, uh, raise funding for the university. And then we spent most of our time going through, uh, the management presentation regarding the revised budget, uh, needing approval, uh, for full year two thousand twenty-five. Uh, the committee, uh, voted to move that particular item for approval, uh, later to the, by the full board. Is there anything I left out from any other, uh, Finance Committee members? That concludes my update.
Thank you, trustee Tucker. The next item on the agenda is the Audit Committee report. The chair recognizes Audit Committee Chair, trustee Darmida Smith Knight, who will provide a report from the committee meeting.
The Audit Committee met today to receive reports on two items and go into executive session to discuss matters deemed confidential under state law. The Audit Committee had a comprehensive discussion about internal and external audits, outstanding audit issues, and related corrective measures implemented by the institution. This concludes the Audit Committee report.
Thank you for your report. The next item on the agenda is the Governance and Government Affairs Committee report. The chair recognizes the Committee Chair, trustee Terrica Smith, who will provide a report for the, from the Governance and Government Affairs Committee meeting.
Thank you. The Governance and Government Affairs Committee, um, met and heard an update yester, this morning from, um, Mrs. Leah Dupree Love from the Ingram Group regarding our legislative matters affecting TSU. This concludes the Governance and Governmental Affairs Committee report, thank you.
Thank you for your report. The next item on the agenda is the Student and Academic Affairs Committee me, report. The chair recognizes the Committee Chair, trustee Jeffrey Northfleet, who will in, who will provide action and informational items from this committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Student and Academic Affairs Committee met yesterday to consider and vote on one agenda item and to receive reports from four other agenda items. The committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of a new TSU policy governing institutional accreditation. Um, additionally, and the committee received a SAC COC update from Academic Affairs, as well as a retention report, and also a Student Affairs report. And I would also like to add that we discuss low-performing academic programs and have tasked administration to take a deeper dive into looking those programs and help the university with its niche for higher education. That concludes my report.
Thank you for your report. And now, we will need to move into some action items. There will be three different action items today. The first will be from the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five TSU revised budget. You have it in your November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four board materials. Is there a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five revised budget as contained in the board materials?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. The question is on the motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four revised budget as contained in the board materials for November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Winton.
Yes.
Trustee Northfleet.
Yes.
Trustee Qualls.
Yes.
Trustee Terrica Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Smith Knight.
No.
Trustee Truber.
Yes.
Trustee Tucker.
Yes.
Trustee Chapman.
None.
Trustee Young Seeler.
Yes.
Madam Chair, yes.
Thank you. As mentioned earlier, the Student and Academic Affairs Committee voted yesterday to recommend to the full board to, and the approval of the TSU policy governing institutional accreditation. Is there a motion to approve the policy?
On behalf of the Student Academic Affairs Committee, I move to approve the policy governing institutional accreditation as contained in the board materials.
I'm sorry, the question is on the motion to approve the TSU policy governing institutional accreditation as contained in the board materials for November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, is there, was there a second? Second.
Sorry. Didn't ask for the second. All right, all those in favor after the second.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion prevails. And then the next item on the agenda is an additional action item. And this is based upon the advice of legal counsel. You probably have all been wondering why we were behind closed doors for an hour. But there have been a lot of actions and discussions between this board. And so, as a result of that, I am going to make a motion to recommend to interim President Johnson to take action to terminate the con- to take action to terminate the contract with former President Glover. In addition, we will strongly recommend for interim President Johnson to take action to terminate the relationship with General Counsel Pendleton. We expect to review, this review to be completed by the end of day on Monday, November twenty-second. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there any additional business? If there's no additional business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.